Is that the clock? We call meeting order. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, can I motion for the acceptance of the minutes of January 18th?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of January 18th, the meeting.
Mr. Secretary.
Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion to accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
So move.
Accept.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. No disbursements or?
I'd like to know this now.
Nope, okay. Alright, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we want to welcome the newest addition to the Austin Police Department, Officer Edward Donnelly. Ed, if you can come down, please. Ed began employment with us on June 6th of 2011. Graduated from the Maryland Police in Correctional Training. On January 26th of this year, finished Topten's class, received a Lee Goldman Award. And he also possesses a bachelor's degree from the Pennsylvania State University. He used to live in Pennsylvania, he's now resident of Elkhorn. And that's his mom and dad in the back. Mayor, if you'll join me, please.
Aye.
Aye. Edward James Donnelly.
Do you swear and affirm?
Do you swear and affirm?
That I support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
Bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
Bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
For the best of my skill and judgment.
For the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer.
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
You go ahead.
Sir, you can come up. If you want to take a picture, you can come up closer.
Good. Very good. Okay, Ken, Severance Trent. Oh, wait, don't touch that mic.
There's no microphone. Talk up, please.
Okay. You know how to do it.
Good evening. I have two things that I'm sure would be all good news, all good things. First, I want to just touch on the sexual quality of the charity every week. Want to show you that he was offered a few of the federal monthly plus. He's had a 2.6 suspended salary of 1.8. Total nitrogen, this is one I really share with you. For the year of 2011, the paper taken from discharge, 11,798 pounds of total nitrogen. And permit limit was 37,156 pounds. So, that's quite good. The phosphorus for the year, the total phosphorus in pounds per year was 365 pounds for the entire year 2011. And when the permit limit is 2,787 pounds allowed. So it's a fraction of the allowed. The permanent discharge is a fraction of what's allowed. Some of the important points I wanted to just discuss with you. I want to let you know that we had an inspection from MDE, age class, on the 13th of January for the dryer operation. And it went real well, it was acceptable, no issues. And then, just last week, we had Randy Danny from the Department of the Environment, who's there all week, and who owns the facility and pumping station. He does a very thorough inspection. And there were some minor issues in the states on our, on our report. And no violations, we'll have to make, type those corrections and send corrected copies into them. But actually, the, real quick. On the water side, I'm going to let you know that we, AC Schulte came in, and it was, it actually was done on the 16th. Replaced the column pipe in the fueling pump. And they also replaced the pump and motor for well number one. And when they pulled the pump and motor out, they also have a device where they are able to go down inside the well, they call it a swabbing, it calls swabs, I can't remember what they say. But anyway, basically, it's a device that goes down into the well and cleans the spring, the well screen. And so I was, so when they finished doing that, they do a video, they kind of did a camera down, and they take a video of the screen, and I was able to see this video. And the screen was like a brain, a brain, I'm sure, it's very, very clean to that.
Good.
So well number one's in great shape, it's putting out 150 gallons a minute. And we're so pleased with it, so that we had a meeting with DPW, and we decided that we could start our renovations of well one immediately. And DPW came over and they removed all the existing water lines inside the well house. They've been there for many, 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 many years, I can't tell you how many years they've been there. And they were in a poor state, they were corroded pretty badly. So the DPW cut out, removed all the pipes, and they replaced all that pipe with duct lined pipe. It's excellent job. And they also cut out the, there was an old pneumatic tank as part of the building in these days. They managed to cut a lot of that out already. So, we're making really great progress. We're gonna, as soon as the facilities can start working, we'll go in and we'll go ahead and upgrade the chemical feed systems in well number one, like the way we did well number three. Well number three is almost completed, I've had three surgeries with the last project on it, and I'll bring pictures of when we did that, 100%.
Good.
But everything's looking good, running good.
So our odor control is paid also, we haven't had no problem with the odor at all, that I know of, no complaints ever.
That's certainly true.
Very good.
It's performing well, the odor control system are working properly. Really, everything in the facility, you know, pretty much everywhere, all stations, everything is operated the way that it should, I mean, I mean, equipped wise. We don't have any, any major equipment that's not working.
Yeah.
Everything's working.
What about all? What about all the sludge that we process, what are we doing with all that, I mean?
Okay, I'll give you an update on that, and I'll tell you what I called Ed Bass, because that's one of his questions too. We have, we, this year, we did remove a portion, I would say it was, it may have been 500 yards, 600, 200 yards of permitted dry material from the plant to a local farm. And, which is good, that's what we want to do. We, and so what we did last year, last, actually, it was spring of the year ago, we sent out a notice type thing to all the farmers in Cecil County and Parker County, to allow them to know, to let them know that we had this material free. All they had to do was come in, take it, and they could put it on at the field. And it would be very beneficial for them to use on the field. Instead of, you know, using fertilizer, synthetic fertilizer, that type of thing. And so it's really a cost saving for the farmer to do that. So we put the word out, and we had one farmer come to the plant. He was an interesting one, I'd say. And he brought along a local engineering firm that does soil planting for a lot of farmers in the area. So he was very interested too. So, the farmer that came by was very interested in accepting materials from the facility. And, so when fall came, I guess he was unable to come and get the material because I think that there was a problem from the time they harvested his fields, and then trying to get the material out of the field and get it worked into the soil. There was a problem, time problem. So, we're gonna call him up this month, February, and let the man know that the materials are there. When, if he wants to come get it, he's welcome to do that, and we'll help, help him make that happen. And we still have a lot of room for storage, it's not like we're, not having a storage room. So, I'm not worried about that. So, I think we're gonna ditch the year, I think we're gonna get a lot of material. There's still, there's a lot of finished comp hook material there. And, you know, we should let the town residents know that it's there for free. And that, you know, they can come and get it. We'll make arrangements if anyone's interested, we'll make arrangements to be there. And, you know, we'll load their containers, whatever, they got their stuff, whatever. They will take it home and use it in their gardens and grow some gray flowers and that type of thing. So it's very bad.
Good, well, why don't you maybe send something over, maybe we could put it on the website? Let people know that it's, they'd like to get that.
That's a great idea, put it on the website, maybe, yeah. Let everyone know that it's available.
Okay.
And it's all in excellent, excellent, the compos, yeah.
Okay, that's what I would do. Alright, you want to send something over, write something up, and we'll put it on the website.
I'll take that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
Thanks.
Yep, alright. Okay. Nick Walls, Public Information Hearing on Water Source Protection Plan.
Now, he's still calling. Actually, he's gonna be doing some of the talking, but thank you though.
I'm Harvey Culler, and this is Nick Walls here. And what we're here to talk about today is a project that we were engaged to do for, on behalf of the state of Maryland, to the benefit of the town of Elkton. As many of you know, in the past five, six years, the number of source water protection projects are funded by the MDE. And they came up with some extra money this year, and they wanted to contribute that money to helping towns they perceived as having water that was potentially susceptible to surface contamination, to have it looked at again in some more detail, and develop protection plans for the wells. This plan, as I said, was funded by MDE. It was an open bidding process, and we were selected, our two firms, Pupidopolis and Associates, and Chesapeake Environment Management, were selected to do eight of these studies for different towns in Maryland. The goals are pretty straightforward, we're going to look at the existing data on water quality and well operation, assess potential issues with water quality and where there might be potential contamination sources, provide concrete recommendations to the town, and work with you to develop needs that, goals that can meet your needs. The plan we'll come up with will be tailored to your local concerns and constraints. And I emphasize that there are no MDE mandates here, and they are not involved in developing this plan. They've put the money aside to do this work, to help you develop a plan. And they've essentially hired us as consultants to do that. My firm, Pupidopolis, we're hydrogeologists. Nick's firm, he's an expert in planning, and between the two sets of expertise, we'll address the following issues. As I said, there was this source water assessment report that was done in 2005, and it looked at land use, water quality, and potential contaminant sources and susceptibility. And we will renew, redo that work with five more years of data, and looking at, among other things, the new well that was drilled, and the potential for that being in use. Once we understand where the potential contaminant sources are, there's been quite a bit of development since 2005, and we understand what the data show us, we'll then look at possible recommendations for protecting the wells if there are any surface sources of contamination. The kinds of things we'll be looking at are public education and outreach, public ordinances that might be useful. Land purchases or easements are an option, many municipalities use for protecting the sources around their wells, or the area around their sources. And then, if we do make those kinds of recommendations, we'll also discuss financial instruments that would be available to the town to help fund those kinds of activities. As I said, these efforts are designed to be specific to your town and meet your needs. So we'll be, you'll be right back with Mr. George previously to discuss this. And we intend to keep on that process of public involvement as necessary. So here we are today, basically announcing this to you, and soliciting input from members of the community and the council, if you have any input. And we will have a second meeting, once we complete our work, to present the draft results and solicit input again from folks in the community to see what they have to say. And most importantly, we're providing our contact information here. This presentation we provided to develop on your website, so if people want to contact us, they can through their phone, or email, or any other format. And that's really all I have to say, really, just want to introduce it and solicit input from anyone who's interested in the community.
I have a question, is this all the wells in the town of Elkton, or the one we are presently using?
The ones you're presently using and permitted to use in the future. So there's a question about, you know, wells that may be drilled in the future, whether we'll include those or not. Unless they're permitted, we won't. It's just wells that are currently permitted for use.
Any other questions?
If you have specific concerns, we can give you a call, and we'll talk about them.
If someone identifies some wells, are they supposed to contact you so you can try to include that in?
Well, the wells we're talking about here are just the ones that are using.
I know you said permitted, but.
But the city supply wells. So it's one, number one, and three are currently ones that are using.
And four.
And four.
Now, the Knights Columbus, the well that's at Knights Columbus, that supposedly years ago had some kind of contamination on it. But now, they use it there, so that would not be considered?
No, the focus of the study is really just those, the wells that the town owns and is using. Now, if there are, you know, potential contaminant sources associated with it, for example, if there are known leaking underground storage tanks or something like that, we will highlight that information if it's something that's still an active concern.
It's not really a concern, it's whether or not we can use that well if the town had that well.
Oh, I see.
Because evidently, the health department says it's good. And so that's my concern, is that well available for use for the town of Elkton? If at one time, the town of Elkton pursued that.
Yeah, well, we, I wasn't even aware that was in the scope, because we were just looking at the wells that the town is currently using, or plans to use. So, I guess we can talk about that one.
Any other questions?
Do we have a well that's currently, we're seeking a permit for?
French Hill.
And would that be included?
French Hill, that's four, yeah. I must start waiting on that permit. Okay. Thank you. Oh, Ken?
I have a question. When you do your study, do you identify like a certain radius, a certain area that surrounds the production wells?
Yes.
That you look at?
Yes.
What is that?
Well, that's defined as the source water assessment area, and it's based upon a travel time, how long it takes to get a particle of water to get from point A to the well.
Right.
And as our policy of Maryland defines, I think a 10-year travel time area for defining that. If you look back at the first image here, it's not very clear in this, in this image of a frame, but those green blobs with the sort of darker purple blobs in the middle, those were the source water assessment areas that were defined in the 2005 study.
Okay.
Since that was done, there have been some changes in the neighborhood. There's some new wells installed to the east. And we'll want to look at whether those are impacting the flow patterns, whether those shapes change. But once we have those shapes delineated, then we'll look at potential contaminant sources in that area. If, for example, you know, theoretically, there's a gas station sitting right on top of the well or right in that area, we'd want to flag that as being a concern, you know, to consider.
Right. So, is this, is this new to the town, or in addition to an existing wellhead protection? Or is this new?
Well, it's basically, it's an add-on to the previous study. The work that was done a few years ago was what they call a source water assessment. And it included some very general recommendations, such as, you know, they weren't really town-specific. What we're tasked to do is to update this part, the hydrogeology part of finding the source water assessment areas, but then also make much more specific recommendations for things the town can do to help protect the source water. So it's really kind of a more detailed study than was done previously.
May I ask a question? Who brought you here?
Who brought us here?
Yeah.
The MDE, the water supply program of the.
I mean, is it all, now you go to every town to check this type of system?
No, they identified 20 towns in Maryland that they felt were, had more susceptible systems to contamination.
What are you talking about? Talk in my, in my level.
Okay, they identified 20 towns where they thought that the water had a greater risk of being contaminated.
Okay, fine, stop talking.
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you have a list of the other towns, the other 20? So this wasn't a statewide, it was just 20 towns identified?
Correct. I don't have it on me, I can certainly send it to you.
Who determined it's towns?
It was the water supply program.
And MDE's paying for all this?
Yes.
And what's the timeframe?
We hope to finish this all by the end of this year. I mean, the actual work is only a couple months' worth of work, but because we need time to have these kinds of public meetings, and also we're doing eight at the same time, we've given ourselves a year to get it done. So by the end of 2012, this should be complete.
Okay.
Then I just wanted to ask, doesn't MDE require, I don't know what to require, what the qualifications are, but doesn't MDE require towns to develop their own wellhead protection plan? And is this, is this, are we talking, is it the same thing?
It's very similar, it's just, again, a little more detailed. I think they felt that these 20 towns could use some more help, so they're essentially paid for some extra consulting and budget.
That's good.
No, we'll be glad to take it, it's just, you know, they need a help, that's great. Okay, alrighty, thank you. Anything, Lewis?
No.
Okay. Okay, Old Business, I think we received our notice, email back from State Highway. I know we've all inquired about the speed on 279. Well, State Highway Department feels that that's adequate speed there. So they had summarized our concerns with the speed along 279, 213, 268. Administration has conducted a site visit and reviewed speeds along the Maryland 279 to gain a better understanding of the ongoing trends in the study area. Speed limits on Maryland roadways are established based on safe, reasonable, and realistic measures in line with the traffic engineering principles. Speed limits are usually best set at 85 percentile to correctly reflect the speed at which 85 percentile of the drivers drive when unaffected by slower traffic. But their actual thing, they're saying that what they found in their study was that the speed was conducive to their, their law, their engineering studies and all that. So I don't, we're not going to be able to lower the speed limit. So we'll stay at the 30 miles an hour during school hour, and 40 miles an hour at all the other times. So we did try. That's anything I have. Mary Jo?
Lewis, I had sent you an email when you were on vacation last week regarding Severance Trent's contract. That has not been signed yet?
No, the board needs, they reached a consensus at the workshop, they never voted to approve the contract amendment, second amendment, if you want to do that, you can do that.
Yeah, because I thought we all discussed that at workshop and decided we were going to save how many thousands of dollars a month with this new contract and extend it. And I thought that was a done deal.
They didn't vote on it.
Well, I would like to then make a motion that we sign the, what is, the contract.
Second amendment to the contract.
The second amendment to the contract for Severance Trent.
Alright, we have a second?
Alright, we have Bush on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then Mayor will sign.
Okay. That's all for Old Business.
Okay. Earl?
Yeah, I have one piece of concern. To Remo, we talked about them using some, used, some water that we did not identify. And I know that we talked about trying to get them to come to the town, and I guess they owe the town so many dollars. Lewis, where are we at with that?
The, I contacted KCI because they had an engineer doing an evaluation on the water that they used over there, and he couldn't give me very good information. Actually, he actually left KCI, no longer there. So I got some very dubious information from Ryan on behalf of this engineer. And I know that Camden over there, and estimated, you know, that they were using a lot for this fire pump. I'm not exactly sure how to quantify it to prove it. But I've notified, or I've had contact with the facilities manager about it, and I'm still pursuing that, I just can't prove how much water they used.
Well, I mean, we can prove water if somebody's using it from a diner or something like that, but yet, we can't prove.
No, I can't, because they don't throw meter. It's not a meter, it's a fire flow, so I don't have a meter reading.
So we are due some, some kind of refund from them for the amount of uses, but you can't identify how much, is that what I'm talking about?
No, I can't, no, at this point, no.
So how do we go forward? Instead of just not knowing anything, we, as a board, I know suggested that a couple meetings ago, that we wanted some kind of reply on that, and I'm just now bringing it back up again after.
Well, I'm not entirely sure, without a measurement, we can only estimate, and then submit a bill to them and see if they pay it. If they don't pay it, we probably wouldn't have solid grounds for litigation against them, because we can't prove, you know, the meter reading or anything. They are a major corporation, so I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
I'm in a situation where I didn't have a metered flow that I could rely on to support. to support, uh, bill. I don't, I don't have that.
Well, let me get this right from the finance department. Most time, if you don't have a meter hooked up, but there's an estimated bill that you send to a customer, if they, we're not sure what the bill is, am I right or wrong?
Well, that would be a minimum billing, if you're talking about gallons, and they, they certainly far exceed the minimum billing for the amount of water that is metered through there, you know, the, the water that you decide that does go through the meter, but as Mr. George said, that the fire protection was purposely set up not to get it through the meter, because of the potential impound, impediment to the slaying of fire, and, uh, that will, yes, we need to come up with a, a good basis for an act that could be, that does not go through an actual meter, unlike, you know, there are other water cells.
One more thing, we, with our water situation today, every bit of water counts for us, and if we are losing money because we can't account for water that's being used to somebody else, then I think that we need to dig deeper than just assume we need to go out and say, we have to send them a bill, send them a bill. And we don't know how much that money is right now. And one thing I was saying, I thought maybe we'd come up with a dollar amount, because I would like to propose that if we do come up with an amount of money, we use that money to find some other resources through some of the studies that we have that's going on now. We don't know how much money we can get from that, but there's the money that we can apply to some of our other finding of water sources. It's the one thing I would like to use as a, a source.
I can't give you that answer. I can't quantify it, I have to pay that point blank. Uh, I don't have any methodology in place to do that. I can only estimate, uh, based on visual observations or tank profits or whatever, and I don't know if Turmo would, uh, play this on it or not.
Okay.
It'd be a very expensive, uh...
Well, I'd like to get some input from, from, um, Ken Benner, because we had a discussion about this, do you mind if we get some...
Are they, are they currently still using?
I...
Using the water?
They stopped, they stopped, uh, doing the fire testing, uh, I'd say about three weeks ago, three to four weeks ago.
Okay, okay.
But let me make a suggestion. Uh, what I would do is I would have Turmo provide, uh, Lewis and the town with the pump curve of their diesel pump, because the pump curve, uh, it will tell you what the capacity is of the pump when it's pumping against a certain pressure.
Okay.
So when I was out there and I looked at this pump, when they were running this pump, uh, you know, and we could go back out and look at it again, just to verify it, they have a, uh, they were running this pump and they were discharging outside, out to the storm drain, out to the front of the building, and, uh, and I asked the, uh, the mechanic there, who showed me this, what the capacity was, and he told me it's two thousand gallons a minute at a hundred and, I believe it was a hundred and fifty PSI. So I, I'm looking at the pump and it's running and it's, I'm looking at the pressure gauge that's on the discharge line going out the wall, and it was reading, I believe, a hundred and fifty PSI. So what I, what I say is get the pump curve, see what the capacity is, and if it, if the pump, because the pump curve will tell you what it pumps, and whatever pressure and pressure is head and feet, you can look at pressure or convert to head, and it'll tell you what the pump's pumping, and, and we have the data at the water plant where every, every week that they, because every week they would call us off and let us know that they were going to exercise their fire pump. So we know, we have that logged in the log book when they called, the day they called, and, uh, how long they ran it, and they ran it, uh, like, you know, about half an hour a week.
Okay, so you can base some, you know, calculations on that?
And, and from our conversation, it estimated at least sixty thousand gallons...
A week.
A week. Now, if we can get an estimate, estimate from sixty thousand, there's a number to start with. Now, if you can do that, how, it's been going on for a while, right, Ken?
Several years.
Okay, so somebody's got to do something and just say we can't do anything because KCI's not involved.
Well, if, uh, if the board feels that, uh, using data from the water treatment plant as an estimate, um, I don't have the reservation of, uh, representing the town and sending that bill to them. I, I personally, uh, I couldn't guarantee how much water went through there, but we can estimate, uh, using that data, and we'll see, see what they, see what they do.
Well, I think that's one way of going about it, because you just tell them it's an estimated bill, and then, like we do with some people, you send estimated bills.
Well, not a, uh, it's not, it's very real. Estimated bill is different from a minimal bill. It's getting thousands, thousands of gallons of water. But I'll, I'll, I'll get what is the plan to supply me, and their estimates, they can give me the numbers, they can give me, uh, physical numbers, I can write a bill pretty quickly.
Oh, good.
Thanks, man.
They, they, they have to support it, but it's not going to happen.
Now, you can do that then, Ken, and get us one to Lewis, and we'll get it out to him.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, kind of copy that pump curve, because that would, that would, you know, tell you everything right there, I'd say. That's better than going out there and, you know, taking, uh, that. The only better, thing better than that really would put a meter on it and run the pump and meter, see what it pumps per minute, I mean, gallon per minute, that would be the very best way of doing it. Uh, I mean, you could require them to do that, you could say, okay, well, here's, we looked at the pump curve, we have the time that you ran the pump, this is an estimation of the amount of water that you've used. If you have a discrepancy with this, then we, then you need to provide a, get a meter, put a meter on the, on the, on the pump and run it for, you know...
You're right, and just basing on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. All right. That's all.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, Lewis, you were asking what the board feel, and certainly, I think all of us would, uh, come together and say, you know, there should be some type of compensation, but you as the town administrator who represents us on a, a daily basis, the, the business affair, how do you feel about it?
Well, I, uh, when I contacted the facilities manager, I thought he'd give me some more, uh, cooperation than he did with respect to the water that they used, and, um, he hasn't been very cooperative, and I don't know if they'll give me the pump curves or not, I mean, you know, private, private company, they could or they could not, but I did expect more cooperation from them, and I just didn't get it. You can't compel people to cooperate with...
Wouldn't you find it to be illegal to be using water that is coming from here, from the town of Elkton, and not can't, we can't represent, I mean, we can't, um, identify it, so wouldn't we consider...
I, I didn't investigate it as a criminal matter, I, I wouldn't do that.
Okay, I'm, I'm saying...
I'm, and I'm interfacing with a major employer...
I, I...
...of the town, I'm trying to be very tactful, and, uh, and, and...
Okay, well, like I said...
For lack of a better term, I'm trying to get their cooperation, because they are a major employer in this town.
They are a major employer here.
So I don't, I'm not playing hardball with these people, I'm trying to be, you know, just like I would be with any major employer, you know, I have to be very tactful in how I deal with those, these type of stories.
And that makes sense, so you're just going to move forward based on the recommendations of, uh, Ken?
Absolutely. And, uh, get this information and, and get some, uh, data that we could support with logs and everything.
Sure.
I'll submit it to the president of the corporation and see, uh, if we can get the cooperation from higher up, and maybe they'll go pay.
Makes sense.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm sure they want to cooperate with us as much as we'd like to.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that it? Charlie, any old business?
Uh, Lewis, what's being done, uh, basically with the cleanup efforts, and I know it's still, uh, this is February with Meadow Park and Marina Park, I know you made some efforts out there to Marina Park, and that work would temporarily stop, so what's going on now?
With, with Meadow Park and Marina Park?
Either, four.
Okay, Meadow Park, uh, I think he's pretty much got everything cleaned up there, uh, had some issues there, but, um, he stabilized, uh, spread, uh, spread straw and seating and, uh, things, trying to keep that from eroding, and he's got, um, um, hot fly with the KCI doing the sediment erosion control plan to put in certain areas, so he's, he's didn't need problems with it. Marina Park, I met with Dan about that, he's going to have to use an incremental approach on it, little areas that are trying, that we can substantiate, that it's abandoned property rather than property possession of people and differentiate between how we remove that property, some is very obvious, it's trash, it's abandoned, others not, so we'll probably work on that incrementally about, I think, in the spring, uh, there's big surprise over there because it's going to be about a forty-foot wide, uh, construction, uh, project going right through the middle of all that, so I want to make sure that, um, there's nobody in there that's going to be potentially impacted by, you know, the eastern Fort Natural Gas construction project, which is right through that area.
That's it.
Is there any old business? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask a question about the two seventy-nine again. I just wanted to make sure that when we did approach State Highway, we did specifically ask for that, uh, speed limit during school activity hours and not just in general, um, I, I really feel like that would make a difference if that was not done.
No, no, we were very explicit.
Okay.
We were, we responded.
Okay, I just, I, I don't...
And I expressed that, uh, probably one, two, three, maybe four times.
Sure.
Uh, they understand that, but they're warrants, so don't, this is really, uh...
All right, thank you. And, uh, one more thing, I'm not, I didn't have a chance to really express my feelings about the, uh, the last, uh, what, two inches to know that we had in, um, in, in our cleanup process. Are we, um, have we established a, a, a clear attack, I guess, on, on inclement weather? Um, do we have a set program now?
Yes, absolutely. I spoke at length with, uh, frequently about the last situation.
Okay, thank you. That it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Only I have for Earl, but, um, but did we see, I think I got a letter from Anita Heath for the Elkton Board of Housing Appeal, uh, resignation, I guess it is, and, um, so we will have an opening on the Elkton Board of Housing Appeal, so anyone knows, uh, anyone that might want to come forward and join that board, it'd be appreciative. Other than that, um, Mary Jo, anything?
Um, new business, I just received a phone call Monday that the senior apartments are sold out.
Uh-huh.
Um, and they sold out in six months and now have a waiting list in case someone leaves. So it was well needed in the town of Elkton. Also, I'd like to commend the chief here, I attended the, uh, police awards ceremony about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, and, uh, it was a fantastic ceremony, started out with a video like you were watching television with a chase scene, and it was our police officers, um, but we... What was that?
No.
Um, but we have some outstanding officers and did a great job, so I just wanted to commend them all.
Well, it's great on the senior center, because, you know, that's supposedly, I guess, the age for the, oh, baby boomers coming up, and they've got any places to go, places to stay.
Yeah, actually, one passed away within the past six months, and they filled it right away also.
Very good, that's good. Never need to get more.
Yeah.
Earl, anything? Charlie, anything?
Yes, with that letter that you just mentioned about Anita Heath, uh, I had taken some notes, I spoke with her before she resigned, and, you know, it's tough, not just here at Elkton, but, you know, wherever, to get people to volunteer, and I believe, uh, Lewis, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the states came up with regulations for volunteerism?
Yeah.
And obviously, each municipality or any local could come up with their own... Lewis George?
I'm not sure to me why it bothers you.
The new...
No, I think it's the financial disclosure that's the...
If, 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 listen, I'm going to get to that point. Okay, no, no, let me finish, basically, and, and, and I know that they come up with some regs for people to be on the volunteer groups and what have you, and the financial disclosure came about as part of it, and I'm just wondering if you could stick with what they gave you, and not necessarily water your down, but to make it a little bit more minimal, because, you know, I agree with her for resigning, basically, she was saying, I'm at a meeting maybe five times a year, but then you want to know all of my business, and, and she has a concern, and I think I would have a concern with that as well. So I'm just asking them, does the local have any say-so, and what was handed to them?
Right, would, uh, an addendum or something?
But my answer to that is the ordinance, as it's in effect at this point, requires disclosure by appointed officials, by their own commissions and committees. That was based on a model provided by the State Ethics Commission and approved, uh, for municipalities, actually, it was less stringent enough to do. What we can do, if, if the board chooses to, for lack of a better term, water, water down...
Or relax.
I can, uh, submit, um, uh, those amendments to the State Ethics Commission Council, go present it to them and see if, uh, it'll fly. If it will, then we can go forward with it. Our ordinance has been approved by the State Ethics Commission as meeting the Senate Bill requirement for ethics, so we're in good shape, uh, at the plate in terms of that ordinance. But however, you have a right to amend it if you like, and if you believe that appointed officials, own commissions and everything would, then out, if, uh, they're under, you know, these types of disclosures, then I can certainly, um, submit it to their council, their lead council, I know who it is, and see if they'll apply, and if it does, we can do that.
Can they do it, uh, can we do it like, Norman, if I, uh, can we do it like for certain boards, or just, or we have to do it all boards?
Well, I think you'd have to do a board of...
They have to do all boards, yeah. They're going to, they're, I think they're going to have to change this policy real soon, because it's happening everywhere, because it's not right, someone is not paid by the municipality, but they're volunteering their time, but they have to do a financial disclosure for everyone in the community to see, and that their people are going off boards for that reason.
Right.
Um, and it's just, you know, but I think the state's going to see that and have to modify that.
I think the state lets you modify it down, but I think they're going to want some kind of short form.
Yeah, and they modify taking sub, the, the subcommittees, the committees off, but anyone on the Board of Appeals or the Planning Commission that's make, that's voting on something in the town has to do the financial disclosure.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you were saying.
They were, they, they, if you are making a decision on behalf of the town, Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals, not a committee like the Bike Committee or something like that, they don't have to do it.
Right.
But it's the boards.
Just the formal commission that is...
The formal, yes.
That have statutory authority.
Authority.
See, that's a different, Planning Commission has statutory authority, or, or Appeals and things like that, those are the people, not, not just...
Right, right, that's what I was saying.
So would you say that the people in Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals be exempt as well?
No, 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 they're making decisions on behalf of the town.
Yeah, well, that's what they're saying, you might have to do it for all the boards, you can't just do it for just the Board of Housing, Housing Authority.
No, no, it's all of them, it's just not a committee like a Bike Committee or, or a, not making a decision, but they actually...
Those people are exempt, though. They're already exempt, yeah.
Well, basically, I guess, see if there's any, uh, areas that we can relax, some of the requirements, and it may not be, but at least it's been that way.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe new business, um, at the corner of Melborn Boulevard and Village Drive, um, there seems to be, uh, water arising from the street on, on a regular basis, um, and it's intermittent, so I'm, I'm wondering if we have any issues out there we might need to take a look at?
Melborn and Village?
Yes, Melborn.
I know that, uh, when we were doing the water tank...
Yes.
People, we had interfaced with a number of people there when we were explaining our project, and they have, um, some of them have sump pumps that run all the time...
Okay.
Uh, because of infiltration, not from us...
Okay.
But groundwater gets in there, believe it or not, I, um, the issues are flowing over sidewalks, forming ice, you know, other hazards, that type of thing.
Right.
And, uh, so I know that's where some of that water comes from.
Okay.
We've been out there and explored it.
Well, it's like a good example, now, I just saw two of them, um, East Village Drive, but apparently the homeowners, apparently from what they're telling me, ran some conduit from their backyard to the front yard underground, and that's what's causing it.
Down from that, uh, area.
Yeah, down, but they're saying, but two of them, all that water is just coming right out of their, off their, out of the grass there, like, looks like a wood yard.
The back yards are mud.
It comes all back and it suits out to the front, they, they put a drain in it for themselves, so.
Okay. Yeah, if that's the case, you know, that's fine, maybe we can address it another way, but what I'm, I'm specifically asking about is kind of like in the center there of that intersection. Okay, thank you.
You have it right in front of your place there.
No. No, no, no. It's off the street.
Was that a power?
It's off the street. And it's been there for, it's always there.
Okay. Oh, that's it, thank you. Okay, seeing everything's done here, I get motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before we adjourn the meeting, just a little, chief, let you know that the dog has done his job. Other night at Elton High School, evidently two kids was fighting, 45 second at most. I guess police called for backup, which I don't much blame you, Wayne, you have a crowd of people. And officers arrived, but certainly, when the dog arrived and all the barking plays, people left. So, you know, it's amazing what a dog can do in spite of an officer having a badge or even a gun in his hand. Just that bark is significant, and it was great.
They can do some damage, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's why we train to bark.
Yeah, well, that bark is significant. People don't like to hear it. I make a motion that we...
We can get that recorded and put it in all the vehicles.
There you go.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.